Girls. People, things, humans.
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 There are humans here?
Okay, so tonight we'll start off with dogs.
I think maybe an apology is due. I know Maria.
I apologize.
These guys have been waiting here for three minutes.
I apologize, yep. Seven oh two. Seven oh two.
My tablet says seven oh one, Maria.
Seven oh one, I go with her tablet.
My tablet's dead, it doesn't even pick up any.
Late is late.
It is. I'm surprised they're still here. How did that?
That's it, though.
They're not here, I'm out of here.
Well, I'm not prepared for tonight anyway.
Dogs.
I'm prepared for next week's meeting, though.
Yes.
Now, if we'd like to have it, because I've read all that.
Oh, okay.
But not this. Set dogs.
You ready with dogs?
I was ready for that last.
Everybody's ready for that.
Well, I've got the proof I was.
I had the swimming pools, I got steep slopes.
Okay, any comments on dogs?
Yes.
All right.
Um, I had a comment, but I don't have to remember what I said.
What you said is dogs attacking other dogs.
Right, I think my only comment was should we, uh, oops. My tablet's writing what I'm saying, which is not really good at all. My only comment of should we add something specifically for dogs attacking other dogs? And other sort of insinuations, but I didn't think it was that clear.
So, dogs attacking other dogs are either two dogs, both of whom are unleashed, or one dog of whom is not leashed, or both dogs of whom are not leashed. If, um, if both dogs are unleashed, then it falls under control of unleashed dogs. If one dog is unleashed, it falls under control of unleashed dogs. And if they're both leashed...
It falls under by control of the owner.
That's right. Control is the, if they're both leashed, they have to be under, the owner must have control of them.
The other thing is I didn't really see, um...
So someone would have to see what happened to it.
Under control of unleashed dogs.
If you had two dogs on leashes, and one dog went after the other one, and the guy said, well, this dog came after my dog, and fuck.
Didn't know if they were quiet and...
Yeah. It's hard to see that.
Under control of unleashed dogs, I see that it talks about that you allow the howling causes damage or destruction to property, blah, 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 blah.
Okay, runs at large.
Runs at large, yes.
Which is a gun.
Number one.
Unless a dog is running at large upon highway, street, side.
So you want a ginger, uh...
Other than those, you know.
Sure. Never mind.
Because it's on there.
What, ginger?
Oh, thank you.
Accompanied by your owner.
There, but where do you want it?
Dog is restrained by an animal. So if it runs at large... Yeah, I'm just, I mean, I'm just not seeing, you know. I see it running at large, but that doesn't necessarily mean it attacks a person or another dog.
Okay. E, in the event that any dog found to be in violation of this law is owned by a person under eighteen years, I'm sorry. A violation of this local law shall be deemed an offense and shall be punishable pursuant to the, um, North State Agriculture six, ah, sorry, F.
Right, we sense that pages are not numbered correctly, not to.
Forty-five, forty-five dash three.
F, okay. Creates a nuisance. F, okay.
So, A, go to F.
A, B, C, D, E.
The violation of this local law shall be deemed an offense.
I see that as eight. Hold on. I'm sorry.
See, it has eight, it's F.
No, yeah, F, I'm not, I'm not, I'm trying to track the pages, which I should be trying to... The versions. This is page one, page two. Control of unleashed dogs, this is the page three. Sorry, I'm reading. Okay, we're looking at, uh...
Forty-five dash three.
Forty-five dash three. I see number one, A, B, C.
Letter F.
D, E, F. Creates a nuisance by defibrillating a person on public or private property. That's under...
Which beyond the veil of security.
That's under other number one, and then letter F.
Okay, let's start from the top. Forty-five dash three, control of unleashed dogs.
Right.
There's A, then there's parentheses one, parentheses two, parentheses three.
Okay, this is number different.
Okay, so this would be, it would be six, then.
One, two, three, four, five, six, and then you're looking at...
The violation of this local law shall be deemed an offense and shall be punishable pursuant to...
Yeah, okay, so the, the number.
Also, also go back to C.
A person who is a dog causing damage or destruction, a person.
To property of a person other than its owner. An dog is a property of a person, or committing nuisance upon the premises of a person other than its owner may file or sign complaint specifying the objectionable conduct of the dog, the date thereof, the damage, cause of description, blah, 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 blah.
Okay, and then F, violation of this law shall be deemed an offense. All right, I mean, if everyone's comfortable with that, I'm not gonna make a big deal of it.
Well, would you wanna add to that, like, or, or another dog? Or another pet?
But a deer for dog causing damage or destruction.
Just saying property?
To property of a person, other, I guess property covers another dog, so, as long, as long as it's...
Property including pets? If I read that as property, I would think, I wouldn't even think of my dog that way.
Yeah, another dog, so.
I just, I mean, I know it's my property, it looks possible.
I mean, I'm thinking of a particular instance when a dog came off of their property and attacked a dog that was walking by on a leash. You know, walking by, they had an order.
And that person would be the...
Then it would be dog at large.
Yeah, so dog at large.
Okay, all right.
Okay, I had a question, um, just a little bit of a language question that seemed, I, I didn't quite understand it. Now, in the version I had that I was looking at, it was forty-five dash three, D, the last line, uh, the village of Cold Spring Justice may permit the filing of an information. What does that mean? I'm unfamiliar with that term. It's used a couple of times.
Upon receipt of...
Yeah, that's unusual.
Upon receipt by the village justice of the village of Cold Spring of any complaint against the contact of any particular dog, is that the, is that the one?
Uh, yes. Wait a minute, I'm looking at, let's see, page forty-five dash three.
I chopped it up to a legal term.
Yeah, I did too. It just, it just came up a couple of times, and I was, I just wasn't sure what it meant. Yeah, upon receipt of...
The last sentence.
Yeah.
Of the village of Cold Spring of any complaint.
The justice may permit the filing of an information and issue a warning, a warrant for the arrest of such person.
What is, what is an information?
Yeah.
And, I'm sorry, I'm not seeing an information.
It's the last sentence of that, which you now call D.
Which one is it, A, B, C, D, E?
It's D, okay. Make the file, uh, uh, check for that one.
Um, it also popped up in forty-five dash six, B.
Hold on a second, I need to make notes.
And if it's just legally is, then never mind, but, um, I was just unfamiliar with that. And then, um...
I'm sorry, you need to give me a minute.
Sure.
Here, just, um, dash, um, forty-five dash, I, uh, an information, okay, and where else went?
Um, forty-five dash six, B. Any person other than a police officer who observes a violation of this chapter may file an information charging such violation with the village court. It's under enforcement?
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
And then under licensing.
Which is, what is the number?
Forty-five dash four. Uh, the last sentence says such license shall be renewed on the schedule established by the town of, Village of Town.
Right.
Oh, okay, that's new since I read it, so, okay? Steve, I'm gonna move ahead, so, that's all.
Uh, it's the presumption, which is forty-five dash five, four, on the last page.
Okay.
I just thought we should, great, now, it's the, um, basically that, uh, Cold Spring in any place other than the premises of the owner.
Yeah.
If the dog is at large, it's presumptive evidence that the dog has been permitted to be at large.
Right.
All right, now, that means, that would suggest that the person is like, sure, go out, just let my dog run around, as opposed to if the dog escaped, which dogs often do.
Dog, that's a dog at large.
Dog at large is escape.
Yeah.
So, but, so if there's a dog at large, they're suggesting this, that it, that it had been permitted to be at large.
Yes.
So permitted, this means that you're allowing it as a, it's, it's okay with the owner for his dog to run free in the town.
Or that you did not have adequate protection.
Or it just found a way out, or whatever.
Yeah.
Permitted, I thought, seemed like.
Right, it seems like the, it's...
You're like, yeah, I don't give a shit about your rules, I'm gonna let my dog run around free in the village.
How would you propose to change it?
Uh, it's somehow that, I don't know, what do you guys think?
Inverted escape?
Yeah, it, it is, it may or may not have been permitted, I guess. It could just be by, the dog got loose, and they didn't know it, or it went out a window or something.
So it says has been permitted to be at large, you would change that to...
Uh, let me think for a second. Could be presumptive, I said, but the...
But is it presumptive that the person is doing it on purpose? Which some people might be, but, you know. Most of the times when dogs get loose, they don't, uh, put someone like a quarter...
How would you change that?
Would you say, would you say evidence that the dog has been permitted to be at large with or without the knowledge of the owner? Or, you know, it doesn't have to permit it?
I don't know, I think it might presume, I just didn't know if anybody else thought that was, it was right, reading that way, or it was just me.
Okay.
Okay, let's...
Want to think about it?
Yes.
Okay, Dave, did you have changes in part?
Nothing to doggies.
No, okay, you're good with doggies.
Steve, just, I'm back on that for a second, what if it reads, um...
Is this in your way?
Or it should be.
I don't know.
Uh, presumptive evidence of the dog is at large with the knowledge of the owner? Take out, has been permitted to be, just say yes.
Is at large, whether or without.
With or without knowledge. Rather than has been permitted. It'll be presumptive evidence that the dog has been, with or without the knowledge. It's just permitted.
I don't know if that would have, stand up. I'll have to go back to John for that.
Well, we're just presuming, uh, an act that might not necessarily be, I mean, there's no...
But I think it might be putting in place there the same, well, that's what it's gonna be considered, if your dog's loose, it's just gonna presume that, that's it.
You're just letting it run around?
Yeah, that you let it.
But if it's loose anyway, you're already in trouble.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I'll check.
So that's just how they're gonna word it?
I'll, I'll check with John to see whether or not they'll hold up in court. Okay. I don't seem to be able to change it.
Is that a day out, or something?
Not really long.
Let's see what kind of areas.
What's our next chapter?
Uh, next chapter is twenty-one.
It's what?
Twenty-one. Plan, ready.
Twenty-four.
Uh, this is the one that I have a lot of time.
I wish I'd read it.
I haven't got it correctly, the correct version. The, uh, I don't go on. You have the right chapter, right version, if, in twenty-one dash one. The third sentence says, third sentence says thereafter, the members of the planning board, not the members of the planning review board.
Okay, yeah, this one shows that as a correction.
Okay, so, comments on this?
I know I had a bunch of them.
Um, I had a question. This is the question, um, as I was reading this, I didn't find anywhere that mentions specifically that the members of the planning board are residents of the village, unless that's...
That's not stated to be required.
It's not.
No. Do you wanna make it to?
Um...
Narrows the pool of choices quite a lot.
But it, it... We kind of, by default, do that anyway, don't we?
We would probably, um, if Dave proposed someone for the planning, that, that was not a resident, I would probably vote against that person, purely on that basis.
I thought that maybe it was part of, um, the village law of the state of New York. I, I didn't read all of that, so...
Not to my knowledge. I, I don't know.
Yeah, I think if it was, it would have been adopted when this was first adopted. You know, I know there are some, obviously, you know, we have to leave those into the village. And the other standing boards are what planning zone, you need to, are they all have to be?
Antidote.
Tab, I don't think any of those require. Only problem is, it's so hard to get people, so I'd rather not narrow it down. It, they, you...
It just, you know, it just always seemed to be that it was common practice and has been. So, do we need to give a nod to that in some way, or?
What do you want to think?
I'd like to leave it more general.
Steve?
I agree with Fran, uh, the, it just...
I'm fine with general.
I mean, it would be nice if the people, um, volunteering work, village members, but if we're, you know.
Well, we'll leave it as...
I think anybody showing an interest in planning board should be, put on a planning board, yeah?
Steve, any comments on planning board?
Uh, no, I don't have any at this time.
Dave?
I don't, no.
Okay. Checks returned, this is a hard one.
Oh, I, I, sorry.
Okay.
I don't need to be persnickety. Um, on twenty-one dash three, uh, about alternates?
Yes.
Um, I guess my quest, uh, my question was, is it necessary to appoint an interim member for a term of five years just for one case of conflict of interest, for one person that needs to step away?
Typically, the alternate attends most of the board meetings. Uh, this is the only board that has an alternate identified, and so by attending all the meetings, the alternate gets a sense of what is going on with all of the issues in front of the planning board. It's not somebody that the chairperson calls on Wednesday night and says, Fran, can you come to the meeting? And where Fran has had zero, um, involvement with the planning board thus far.
I think like on, in zoning this year, Aaron was the chair.
Mm-hmm.
He had the, he had a conflict, 'cause one of the applications came with persons across the street. In this case, we didn't have an alternative, but if we did, they could have stepped in in, in, in that instance, because he has to recuse himself and actually leave the room.
Mm-hmm.
So if that happens in planning, we have an alternate, an alternate, and they can step in, just for that.
Oh, right, I, I mean, I get the need for it, I was just one, wondering if we need to keep that alternate around for five years, or if it's just something that's done for that particular case.
I believe you appointed an alternate for a five-year period.
Yeah, for the planning, yeah.
Yeah.
I guess just so they're there.
Okay.
To me, I mean, is it required that you have an alternate?
No, it's not required, but the planning board did find that they needed an alternate.
Yeah.
Okay. So, so much for planning board.
There was sections, or maybe you had answered them, I'm sorry, because...
No, no, that's okay.
I made comments on stuff, and I can't find my comments, I'm like, I don't look, I'm not looking at the right stuff, and nothing is working, so...
Take your time.
On planning board?
Okay, I know, I had comments about it may or may not, um...
Oh, that was on the plat.
Right. Um, and basically, it was, I had the same. Because the way that they, I don't...
So it's, um, I believe it's, um, so it's twenty-one dash four, so, sorry, twenty-one dash five, notice to county clerk.
Right, okay. Um... The way it read, it sort of said, these, you know, they may have been filed...
Correct.
With the clerk.
Correct.
So what if they have not been filed?
Then there is nothing that can be done to further authorize or empower the planning board to approve them.
So then should we reword it to say, uh, these, those which were filed?
I, I think it reads okay the way it is. This is forty-five dash five, it's a very long sentence. The clerk of the village, blah, 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 and empowered the planning board to approve the development of plats or maps entirely or partially undeveloped, and which may have been filed in the office of the clerk of the county of Putnam, prior to the appointment of the planning board, all within the village of Cold Spring, county of Putnam, New York, pursuant to the provisions of seven dash seven to eight of the village law of the state of New York, and other appropriate sections of the village law of the state of New York, and the village clerk is hereby requested to write to the, blah, blah, blah.
So basically says, uh, to approve the development of plats entirely or partially undeveloped, and which may have been filed in the office. So to me, that, that leaves the, what if they haven't been filed? It doesn't.
Then, then they can't be, um, approved.
But that's not clear. I mean, I'm, I'm ignorant of, of planning board stuff, so I never volunteer.
I, I think, if you were to diagram out the sentence, I think you would see that there's not a need to say, or may not.
Okay, if it were, that's...
Has further authorized and empowered the planning board to approve the development of plats or maps entirely or partially undeveloped, and which may have been filed in the office of the clerk of the county of Putnam, prior to the appointment of the planning board.
I mean, if everybody's comfortable with it, I'm fine.
If you say, if you say that may or may not have been filed, if they have not been filed, then...
Then, yeah.
They're not authorized or empowered to approve the development of them.
Okay, so instead of...
Because they're not there.
Instead of that, would it be say, and which were filed, or have been filed, take out the word may, which have been filed. That way, it clearly states just one thing. Entirely, partially undeveloped, and which have been filed in the office of the, so, another of two places where that sort of appears.
I think...
If you, if everybody's comfortable with it as it is, I'm fine.
Okay, Dave, what do you think?
I'm fine with the way it is.
Lynn?
I'm okay, this is just one of those...
Very long sentence. Steve?
Yeah. Uh, I'll say that, yes, but what I've been doing is, rather than talk about eddings and run on sentences and things that don't make sense, I'm correcting them as I read it.
Okay.
And just sending it to you.
Okay.
And then you can consider it that way.
Okay.
Instead of wasting time, uh, doing that stuff. But I agree, that's a, that's a ridiculous thing.
So, you know, I mean, as it is.
It could be better, but...
Yeah, it wasn't, I wasn't so concerned with the run on sentence.
My eyes kind of glaze over on this one, so...
Yeah, you gotta read it in pieces.
There are typical run on, I wasn't so concerned with the run on sentences, which just mean...
No, I didn't.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
Well, that's, you know, legally, so...
Anything else?
Uh, yeah, the, um, where am I? Uh, let's see, twenty-one dash two, chairperson? Um, for all the time I've been here, I've been the person that appointed with the approval of the village board, the chairperson. This says the village board is...
This...
Designated, hereby appointed, is that, am I right on this, or I repeat, or whatever?
Yeah, it says the board reserves the right to appoint the chairperson.
Right.
And the chairperson is hereby appointed.
Designated, here, appointed for a term of one year.
Mm-hmm.
Village board shall annually appoint.
Well, we do that with the reorg, is that?
At the reorg, yeah. And for every other board, too. I think it should be the mayor at the, with the approval of the board.
I think a lot, I mean, a lot of these things, when I've seen them, they sort of, they sort of take the board of trustees to mean all of us, all five of us.
Yes.
In a lot of instances.
I looked, I looked it up today, in fact, the board of trustees is, um, for village, for any village that I looked at, the board of trustees is composed of elected officials, trustees, and mayor. So, board of trustees will be the five of us.
I understand that, but it's usually, the mayor is the one that usually makes the nomination, or it's, that's how we've been doing it. We've been doing it for the five years I've been here.
But we've all...
I've brought up whoever, I wanted to be chair, and it's appointed by the board. I mean, the board, we discuss it, and...
So if the board were to say no to your recommendation, then you, it wouldn't go through?
Yeah, so then who makes the recommendation? Anybody?
You make them.
Anyone can, anyone in the board of trustees can make them.
Then what have we been doing the last five years?
Can make...
You're doing it right, it's just that one of us could have also...
Can make the motion.
Right.
Any one of us can make the motion, and then the other four can vote on it.
It would seem to me that the person that's, you know, the highest level...
Yeah.
Is the person...
When we're voting, we're all equal.
I don't care about that. It's the same with governors and presidents.
Turn camera off, quick.
Governors, presidents, whoever else, don't they make nominations that are approved? It's not like the board, Congress doesn't make...
It seems to depend on the president, just recent history, because the...
Okay, we're not getting into politics.
Yeah, we're not getting into politics, other than the ones that are, I mean, in the future, do you want the mayor to always have to be the person to appoint?
We're not appointing, they're making, yeah, I think that that person, it has people that are gonna be working under him, it's his administration.
You make the nomination, there's no argument with that, but it's the five of us who confirm the appointment. And that, that still is...
But in other places, it's stated that it's the, at the pleasure of the, of the mayor or whatever, and with the approval of the board. And I don't know exactly which sections they are in, in our code, but that's how it reads.
Well, that, that seems to be the way it's, it's been done, you know.
Definitely.
Always.
When I took, when I, when I, our first term went over, I, I appointed, uh, I appointed Matt the planning board, and we, it was approved by the board.
There, there's been no change.
What's that?
There has been no change to that.
You also removed somebody from the position, also.
Well, it was probably after a year, or whatever, it was a one-year appointment.
Oh, was it one-year appointment?
That's what the chair...
Well, I guess the question is, regarding the code, do we want, especially this part of the code, to reflect com, you know, common practices as have been practiced for many, many years, or do we want it to read like this? I tend to side with Dave.
You kind of, at, at a reorg meeting, we wouldn't be able to appoint anyone, we'd have to come to a reorg meeting, and we'd all have to like, say, okay, who, you know... You can, at, at a reorg meeting, we wouldn't be able to appoint anyone, we'd have to come to a reorg meeting, and we'd all have to like, say, okay, who, you know, we make the nominations, or we can discuss it, I mean, is that the way you want to work that?
Yeah, but I don't, I don't read the, okay, because that's not what we do, I don't read this that way. It says the board of trustees reserves the right to appoint, it doesn't matter who brings the name to the table. Right. You know, you've been sort of bringing the names to the table.
But I mean, aren't we supposed to be setting the procedures here, is this a procedural policy issue of who's appointing them? I mean, so if we don't say who's doing that, who is actually, who's doing that, the village board, and who's the village board, anybody can.
You wanted a separate line to say who's nominating? Because the board is actually.
I know, like I said, I don't remember what section it is, but there's other sections, it's that, that, you know, that the, the appointment is made by the mayor and approved by the boards, I mean, by the board.
Subject to approval, that's the way they say it.
I mean, I'm fine with that, because that's, that makes more sense to me, but, uh, I just always assumed the board of trustees was all of us, and just, you know, it flows, I guess, because it's the way we've been doing it, is it a John question, or is it a?
Well, if, so for a good example, would be if Dave appointed somebody, and if the trustees were allowed to nominate too, they can say, well, actually, I would think we should nominate this other person. And then we would, it would become.
Well, what would, what would happen is Dave would make a motion to appoint X. He would then ask for a discussion, and at that point, the other person would say, I would prefer to appoint Y. And so, there would be a vote on the, the motion that's on the table, and if the motion failed, then the appointment of Y would be discussed and voted on.
But if you know one wanted my appointment, someone else, according to this, could say, I nominate this person.
Yeah, but.
Right, and that's where I'm saying, I think that that's a problem with that.
Why, even when.
Because I believe that, that, uh, if it's an administration, and someone's sitting in my seat, that I should at least have the people that I want to work under me with the approval of the board, as long as it's not.
Not elected people.
But your nomination could all.
Not elected.
I mean, if, if we write it that says the mayor nominates, and, you know, then at the, at the approval of the board, your nomination could, can also be rejected.
Yeah.
If I have someone else that I really like, it's the same, you know, I can also.
It can be rejected, and then the mayor could come with someone else, it's like a Supreme Court nominee.
No, it's not, well.
The president would nominate, they goes to Congress, Congress doesn't want him, they, and they don't, you know, it's not.
They do come back with somebody else, so you, so you want it specifically to be.
Well, it, yeah.
The way it is now, we could say, if you made it just you, you would be the only one that could nominate, even if we had a third person, a second person, and we wanted them, and you didn't want to nominate that person, then they couldn't be nominated. But, or you would just say, well, that's fine, we'll lose him.
We could use some language, we could put some language in there, like, um.
Well, maybe that's too authoritarian for us all, we should just, it should be. We should do a round, and every year, if you're here for four years, someone gets the check.
Straw.
I don't care, you don't want it, I don't, I don't really care, I just think it was something where it's.
I think the mayor should have that privilege. Because we can vote at ten.
What is the privilege?
Of nominating, uh.
Why are you so against it, Mark?
Well, I have a problem with nominating.
What?
No, it's the word, you, people don't nominate.
Appointed, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
So do you want to say the mayor deserves the right to appoint the chairperson, uh, with the approval of the board of trustees?
Well, you have to say only the mayor. It's like just the approval and then.
I mean, there's other sections, I'm not familiar with, I, I know there's other sections where that's where, how it's stated.
I, I, I cannot agree or disagree with you, I would have to.
We need to find.
Yeah.
Table.
Okay, let's, let's move on then.
And Brian, and Brian, anything else on twenty-one?
Oh, no, I did find my other comments and everything else, it was.
Bring them up, please.
No, you took care of it, everything was fine.
Okay.
We should straighten out the board of trustees, so, the, being consistent with the names.
Um, checks returned.
I have nothing on that.
Steve? I had nothing on that one either.
I, uh. I'm gonna read, I, I've read what we're doing next to me.
Okay.
So, uh, my not commenting is just that, because I don't know.
It's okay, recycling.
I like recycling.
Thank you, thank you for that comment.
It'll work better.
And this is the one where all of your comments, you know, you got mixed up.
Source separation required.
On recycling, I had ninety-three eight enforcement by the highway two two is included, I don't.
Okay, uh, just one thing, I want to make sure you're all agreeing with this, under definitions, which is ninety-three dash three, I have removed consciously, and with knowledge of worth of, tires and white goods.
What is that?
Tires and white goods, the code currently says that you can recycle tires, washing machines, transmissions, axles, blah, 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 I'm taking them out.
Mm-hmm, go with me.
Fine.
Uh, I have a question about that, uh, what, what stuff is recyclable?
Yes.
Um, there's corrugated cardboard, but aren't we also doing, um, like grayboard, like cereal boxes?
Newspaper, corrugated cardboard, paper, glass, tin, and aluminum can, what would you like changed there?
Carton, no, is that the word, or is it called cart?
I thought it was called gray.
I've never heard of that term.
Gray board.
Paperboard?
Paperboard, yeah, that's probably.
Stranger's walking in.
Yeah, that's what I have, paperboard such as cereal boxes.
One more, you're true.
Paperboard, that's the other word.
There's no internet access.
What's, do we have anything you need?
It's paperboard, it's, is it thick?
It's not an acro.
While there's no rigid differentiation between paper and paperboard.
Cardstock.
Paperboard.
Cardstock.
There's no rigid differentiation between paper and paperboard, paperboard is generally paper, usually over three millimeters, uh, thin paper, thin paper, and there's cer- certain superior attributes such as flexibility and, yeah. You said grayboard? Okay, grayboard, the term grayboard is used to describe a low grade, one hundred percent recycled, gray colored, thick board used for pegbacking rigid boxes, it's different backwards from.
Oh, that is what I mean.
Oh.
The grayboard, it's like pasta boxes, um, cereal boxes, uh. What else comes in that?
Every.
So. Do we want grayboard and.
Mm-hmm.
And paperboard? Do we want grayboard and paperboard?
That makes sense to me, that way, it, it, it reads that you can recycle that, and, and that stiff stuff is not just corrugated cardboard, which is a very specific thing.
That may have applicability to what we're doing. Yeah, okay. Um, anything else on definitions?
Hmm, anything on definitions?
Sorry, is this in definitions? Let me see, definitions.
Yeah.
It is in definitions, to recycle those things.
It is in definitions, yes. Somebody had a comment, uh, when we started talking about this.
I had a comment, but I think you may have corrected it, I don't know which version, we haven't been looking at anymore. Uh, in ninety-three dash four, there was a, a sentence hanging out, that said, no person shall knowingly dispose of solid waste within the village of Cold Spring, which contains recyclables, and there wasn't, uh.
It was, um, I think it was on.
Offenses.
Uh, yes, ninety-three dash five, it said, under C, it said, no person shall knowingly dispose of solid waste within the village of Cold Spring, which contains recyclables, if you go up to source supervision required, ninety-three dash five, it shall be mandatory for all persons to separate recyclables from other solid waste disposed of or left for collection or disposal within the village of Cold Spring. So, I believe that that hanging sentence in ninety-three dash five is actually covered in ninety-three dash four A.
I'm sorry, I took it out.
I took out ninety, ninety-three dash five.
Okay.
Now, uh, you actually, Fran, had a comment on, on recycling in October.
In October?
Yes, you did, you recommended that instead of listing the valid recyclables in the code, that we have the clerk maintain the list, so that as technology changes, um, it, it can be done via a, a resolution button of the board, and just a change to the clerk's list.
Okay.
So, if everyone is, if it's acceptable to everyone, um, ninety-three dash three, the list of recyclables shall be removed.
That makes sense, that gives us flexibility in the future.
More flexibility, and the village clerk will maintain.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Will. But will the fact that the village clerk will maintain this, would, this be part of the code?
It, yes, recyclables, s, um, and, uh, I'll reword it to say.
Gotcha.
Uh, the list will be maintained, I don't know if it's clerk, available in the council office.
All right.
Yeah, it should be updated, I guess it should be reviewed every year, or whenever.
Yes, we'll have Dave review it annually.
Okay.
At the reorg meeting.
Okay.
Anything else for?
You can appoint new things to recycle.
Anything else for ninety-three?
Should I nominate?
Nominate, yes.
No, appoint, appoint.
A point, yeah.
Can it be done down the gazebo?
I guess so.
No, it can be done at the bandstand, right.
Okay, so we're good with ninety-three?
Ninety-three eight?
Oh, ninety-three eight.
Enforcement, uh, and I don't have a piece, I don't know where, Jeff's given me everything here.
I know, this is.
I ran out of ninety-three four.
Ninety-three eight, preparation.
Street for sidewalks, I'm sure.
Whoa.
Is it enforcement?
Oh, that's ninety-three nine, the provisions of this chap, chapter shall be administered, enforced, enforced by.
Enforced by, there's three.
The village of Cold Spring Highway Crew Chief, the village of Cold Spring Code Enforcement Officer, and the village of Cold Spring Police Department.
I don't know how the crew chief enforces.
Uh, actually.
Enforce.
The village of Cold Spring Highway Department. You don't think?
I think.
I don't know how they, what the enforcement means.
What, what they would do, I mean, according to, you know, my, my thinking on recycle, um, like, if, if, when it comes to the point where we're really more organized with this, if they go down the street and you're recycled, barely open it up, and it has garbage in it, that isn't recycled, they can just not take it, they can put a tag on it that says, we're not taking this because blah, 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 blah.
But is that enforcing?
I would say it's enforcing.
Is it? Okay.
So I'm gonna change this.
Or he's in authority to.
I'm gonna change this to the village of Cold Spring Highway Department.
Yes.
Maybe we should reserve the right to appoint somebody later on or something, because.
Kick, kick him under the table, then.
Well. No, I mean, like, what, what if we start separating things on a, like, we talk about?
Well, yeah, I've talked. I've talked to Budgie about this.
I mean, that could be the list held by the clerk, but.
I mean, a lot of, a lot of.
Maybe we need somebody to trash inspect.
A lot of municipalities will have someone, you know, go to the streets before the truck gets there, go down and open everything up, and tag them. You know, with a tag, and then pre-printed tags that either say, you know, we're not collecting this because, and check something off. We don't have the ability to do that, and maybe in the future we would, I don't know, maybe you could get some high school kids who are looking for community service, and teach them about recycling at the same time, but, um, you know.
So we don't need that.
Because some communities have, have the recycling enforcement officer too, who goes through, looks at your trash, and tags your trash if there's recycling.
I gotta remember that we're on video, so I won't say what I'm thinking.
Whoa. So they don't pick up your trash, it keeps that recycling.
Well, you self-censor.
Okay.
Well, you know, upstate, they have places where you can only use clear bags, when you take, throw your trash out. They just, they look at the bag and they see anything that's recyclable.
I mean, clear bags are hard to buy, do you go to the store and try to buy clear bags? I've tried a couple of times, they're, they're.
But that's how they, one of their.
I guess in those neighborhoods, they would, um, probably sell them better.
Yes, the streets and sidewalks.
Okay, I think I did just show, I don't know if it actually shows on there, this technology that I have, that doesn't even work. I did this in sections.
Dave, I think this is where the, um, dining comes in.
What's that?
I think this is where dining comes in.
Yes, that's the, at the end.
How fresh it is.
After all the excavation.
Okay. Comments?
I know I have a bunch here, but I, I gotta find it. Since we move around, what are you moving?
Oh, so let me, hold a second, one oh eight dash twenty-four is sleigh riding or sliding on the street or sidewalk.
Oh, it says merchandise on sidewalk.
I know, the numbers have all been sort of changed around, so that's.
So where are we at?
Article seven. Uh, yeah, mine says.
One oh, one oh eight dash twenty-four, which is coasting, it's either coasting on street or sidewalk, or sleigh riding, or sliding.
Oh, that's twenty-three for me, dash twenty-three.
Okay, yeah, whatever, um.
Yes.
So, John is saying that if we keep this in, and what it says is that the village board will identify those streets where sleigh riding is permitted. I just need to find it here. But essentially, my question is, do we want to leave it in the code?
The coasting in street, well, I don't know where we're at, I got a little different numbers there.
One oh eight twenty-three.
One oh eight twenty-three.
There's a new one oh eight around someplace.
We're in one oh eight dash twenty-three, yes?
Yeah, that's what it is in mine.
And it's coasting on streets or sidewalks, is that where we're at?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and what do we leave?
So, it, the first sentence says, no person shall engage in sleigh riding, coasting, or sliding upon any street or sidewalk in this said village, except at such times and in such places as may be designated by the board of trustees. Now.
I don't have sleigh riding on here.
Yeah, yes.
Skateboards?
Yes, it's, I've been having a lot of problems with Google. The, the part, what John has recommended is, if this stays in there, whenever the village board designates a street at time for sleigh riding or coasting, they must need, they need to do it by resolution. Now, the question is, do we want this?
No, there should, I don't think there should be any sleigh riding, but, I mean, they do it on the hill at St. Mary's, um, probably a few other hills, but not on the streets, and not, I mean, we're not going to those streets and sidewalks, so.
What about skateboarding, say, out in front of the, uh, the flower shop up there, where the guys constantly are skateboarding, they're wrecking the sidewalk, and they're totally annoying the. where the guys constantly are skateboarding, they're wrecking the sidewalk, and they're totally annoying the person inside. If we don't have anything, they can do it.
One thing at a time. We will go to skateboarding next.
Well, it's in the same thing.
Yeah, and I can change, I can change.
Oh, so you just want to change sleigh riding?
The first question is, what, what John has said is if we leave this in there, we need to pass a resolution.
Okay, leave what in there? Because I was just talking about coasting, you said we'll get to that, so.
No person, okay, so let me read out to you what I think you have in your document. "No person shall engage in coasting or sliding upon any street or sidewalk in the village, except at such times and in such places as may be designated by the Board of Trustees." The question is, what, the point that John brought out is if you leave this in here, you have to pass a resolution stating the place and the time when it is permitted.
So can we just take it out and stop after, "No person shall engage in coasting or sliding upon any street or sidewalk in the village," period? Take out the except as such times.
Well.
Well.
Do you want to say that?
Coasting as skateboarding?
No.
Coasting, well, coasting could be.
Well, what's?
It, it was, the coasting was.
Riding sleds down Main Street when it snowed back in the eighteen hundreds.
Actually, it was riding sleds down Parsons Street and Northern Avenue, and at times Crete Side Drive. Those were the three streets where it occurred.
Because you can't take riding a skateboard down the street.
Sorry, you asked about, I thought you asked about coasting.
Yeah.
Yes.
But coasting, but it's, skateboarding is right under there. Coasting or straight.
It is, but it, this paragraph does not yet address skateboarding.
So you're, you're thinking, you're not considering skateboarding to be coasting?
No.
Or sliding?
No. I mean, it's skateboards, inline skates, roller skates, that's what.
I think coasting should be defined then, because.
Yeah. Yeah, that should be one of the definitions then, because.
Riding a bobsled down Main Street, that would be coasting.
Toboggan.
Toboggan. I prefer toboggans.
I like toboggans.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's weird because underneath that one oh eight twenty-three coasting, the only definition is skateboards, and then unlawful activities.
In a careless manner.
So the, skateboards are defined.
Well, not precaution and circumspection.
Precautions. It's, it's just. Yeah, the only definition is skateboards, which.
Okay, so coasting. Coasting is to slide, run, or glide downhill by the force of gravity, or to move along without or as if without further application of propulsive power. That's a definition for coasting. That's, if you wanted a definition for coasting, that's the definition.
But here it's meant as winter, winter activity specifically.
Yes, see, I mean, the, the, the whole section is really weird the way it's written.
It is.
Because it talks about coasting and sliding, and the only definition that they bring up is skateboards.
So it's like they added the skateboards in the fifties or whenever people started skateboarding to this rule that was already here? Or something.
And then went into inline skates, which isn't really even a skateboard.
So if you were to remove the first paragraph, which says, "No person shall engage in coasting or sliding," they start off with definitions. The definition is with skateboard. And in addition, as part of the definition, inline skates, inline shoes, skates or footwear, roller skates, skates or footwear with one, with a single roller, roller wheels, or two or more rows of roller wheels, and then unlawful activities. "No person shall operate a skateboard, inline skates, blah, blah, blah."
So they really don't go back and talk about sledding, roller skating?
Including the entire paved and improved surface thereof, including gutter areas and curved sidewalks or on any public, in a careless manner without due caution and circumspection, while endangering or in any manner to create a risk or danger to any personal property or in any manner to impede or interfere with pedestrian or vehicular traffic. "No person shall use or operate the aforementioned play vehicles as defined on the following streets or sidewalks whatsoever. Main Street entire length, West Street entire length, waterfront docks and walkways entire length."
What about scooters and bikes? Those are play vehicles.
Not identified as, as a. Scooter is, is not operated just on gravity? Bikes are certainly not operated just on gravity.
Skateboard, you know, you push with your foot, like you would a scooter.
Well, there you go. Okay, so.
I don't know, I see scooters and skateboards as basically operating identically.
I agree.
Okay, so you just can't go downhill, you can only.
Go uphill.
All right, so, so we need to relook it because this one oh eight twenty-three really doesn't, really doesn't say anything about sledding, I mean, in terms of a sled or a sleigh.
Just the first paragraph would imply that.
Yeah, and it implies, but doesn't, so do we want to, do we want to just?
Actually, John said that we, I mean, that was his interpretation, that this was sleigh riding.
He interprets this chapter as sleigh riding?
No, in the first sentence.
The first.
The first sentence.
Sorry, the, the.
The first paragraph.
Especially the sliding part. It's not the coasting so much, because you do coast on bikes, and you do coast on.
Well, why don't, why don't we change the wording to make it more specific? And then list, do we need to list, um, vehicles, if you want to call it, that are prohibited from these streets?
In all the road streets.
And do we want it in all the road, I mean, I, I don't especially appreciate somebody riding a skateboard, you know, say up Garden Street or Church Street, or, you know, especially if somebody tries to go out of the house and those kids are flying down on, you know, on sidewalk.
But there are some people that use skateboards as transportation.
Well, I, okay, let me, let me rephrase, not necessarily a street, sidewalk.
Well, I, I agree, they shouldn't be on sidewalks, but if somebody's, you know, if somebody's headed to the tra- actually, there's this guy with a longboard that comes right down Main Street all the time and headed right to the train. And it's not like he's impeding, I mean, he's no danger, more dangerous to anybody than a bike, somebody on a bicycle is.
So really what we need to not have in here is the except as times and such places designated by the village board.
I would just take that whole first section out and then specify later what kind of behaviors.
Well, they have behavior in there, in a careless manner, without caution or circumspect, while endangering or in any manner.
No circumspection.
Person or property.
Yeah. I mean, kids are riding their bikes down the sidewalk too with.
Yeah. Everybody, when you're, when you're riding and you go up on a sidewalk for twenty feet till you get to the door you're going to or whatever. Do we want people to ride sleds down any streets?
Is it possible to ride sleds down any streets?
Well, sometimes I send sand down the street and it's slick when it's all snowy, so.
There's a little traffic going.
Only when they're plowed.
Only when they're plowed.
Yeah, I want them to learn to stay on his toes. Uh, I don't know. This is a strange. Yeah, you probably don't want someone riding a toboggan down Main Street in a snowstorm.
I mean, I guess we gotta say, what's the intent, what would we want the intent to be? I mean, we can change, we don't have that coasting. What, what's the intent of this? To me, if there, we're talking about skateboards and inline and all that, I think that, you know, we talk about that, and then it's in a careless way, or damaging someone's property, or annoying, or disturbing.
But does a sled ever do that, really? I mean, is it even relevant?
Why don't we divide this into a section specifically for sleds, which is.
But what are we, what are we worried about sleds for? What are we?
Are we worried about sleds?
Are we crazy about sleds?
Does somebody, I mean, well, you know, if you.
If there's a hill downtown.
In every really bad snowstorm, the kid's gonna get in the middle of Main Street and get on a sled and go down, which if there's no cars, you wouldn't.
I said I would when I was a kid, no doubt.
I mean, at that point, not that I don't care, but you know, it's a snowstorm.
Ride down Main Street.
That's what you do. When it's snowstorms, you get on sleds and you ride down the hill, yeah, you ride down Main Street, you know, I mean.
You're out walking around in a snowstorm, but you're sledding.
Why don't we just say something like, "No person shall engage in sledding or sliding or coasting to impede traffic on any street or sidewalk?"
I would, I would, I would put more limits on sidewalks. I mean, on streets, you know, it's dangerous to the person doing it, and that should be their responsibility, their parents' responsibility. You know, I mean, I've seen kids come skateboards, or little skateboards that they sit on, straight down High Street, right into Main Street without stopping to, you know, and that's not a smart thing to do. But they do.
Well, we can't limit every stupid thing that people do.
I mean, and that's, yeah, that's the issue. I mean, what I'd like to say is I don't want any skateboards on sidewalks. Roller skating, yes, that's sort of where you roller skate is on a sidewalk, but skateboards, no, and then sleds, no. I think that's, that's crazy and that's dangerous, and sidewalks are not big enough to begin with for people to walk on. I think, I think, so that we don't go on endless, I think this whole, this one section needs to be rethought through. I don't know if that's something we want to, we want to put aside, or do we just want to keep going through it?
What do you want to do?
Well, it's with a lot of other stuff, like merchandise on sidewalks.
No, it's not. It's, it's a different chapter. It's a different section.
Oh, it is, but it's under.
I would just talk about one oh eight twenty, well, what it looks like on my sheet is twenty-three. I don't know what it, what it ended up being, but just that one sec, that one section on coasting which goes into skateboards and roller skates.
Okay, let's like, yeah, okay, let's table the coasting one oh eight dash twenty-three, right?
Yes.
Put our thinking caps on, and, and come up with something that, that, that makes everyone happy on that one.
Okay.
I think everyone should stay in their houses, not be allowed outside.
Not outside, nobody's allowed outside.
No playing is not.
No free running, no playing without.
No fun.
You're nominating that we table this? Nominating we table this.
Okay, so I interjected that topic at the beginning of the chapter. So, going back to the beginning of the chapter, any comments?
One oh eight dash four. I have something. I just, it, this was just a question. Yeah, the insurance requirements to opening up the street?
Uh-huh.
My question is just, is a hundred thousand dollars per person, three hundred thousand per accident, and fifty K aggregate?
Sufficient.
Sufficient. I mean, maybe this is just a paranoid fantasy if not, but I can see a whole lot more damage like that too happening to someone by cutting a hole in the street.
Okay, so what would you recommend for the public liability? Five hundred thousand?
Yeah, five hundred, personal injury. And.
Okay, wait, hold on a second. Let me, let me get these changes made.
Well, that could, you know.
For any, for any one person, and not less than three hundred thousand dollars for any one accent, accident, you would beg that one million?
Yeah.
But does that subject change in the future? When those amounts won't be as.
And please.
Oh.
Won't cover it either.
We haven't gotten to fifty thousand yet.
For any one accident, the property do have insurance, any amount of, not less than fifty thousand?
I'm thinking three hundred thousand, because really, as close to the street as a lot of our buildings are in Main Street, you could do some serious damage to a person's main drain, their water supply, their.
Okay, don't.
How, you know, I'm just.
I'm assuming everyone is in agreement with upping the amount.
I am, but I was just wondering, what happens when this isn't enough money in the future? Like, is there a way to?
Okay, and satisfy, that said insurance has been approved as a form of confidence, and add, to ensure the village against any loss, so.
Rising.
Uh, of course, evidence of the satisfaction include public liability.
Oh, they may be increased by resolution, okay.
Yes, yes.
There you go.
Okay, next topic. One oh eight dash four, one oh eight.
Yeah, I have topics, but they're, they're continuing down. Um, a lot bothered Dan.
I'm sorry, a what?
It's one oh eight, which looks like twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
No, it isn't twenty-two. I guess it used to be twenty-two. Cleaning of sidewalks, wherever that went to.
One oh eight dash.
Twenty-one on newspapers, it's twenty-two originally.
I want to be able to quote this to people that have jobs on Main Street.
Okay, like cleaning.
Section one oh eight F twenty.
Yes, please do. Uh, I was interested in what I, what you see a lot on Main Street, on, on the sidewalks and the streets is people's drains from their houses with the water running down and then it freezing, which is a lot of. Now, these, these, this ice is not in front of the houses, it's snow and ice removal says, you know, in front of the buildings.
Somewhere I think about downspouts or.
Was, I didn't see the downspouts, that's what I was looking for.
Yeah, it's somewhere.
It says, "Snow and ice and water falling from buildings," but that's not considered, I wouldn't consider that falling ice.
But he said downspouts.
Yeah, I didn't see, if you can search downspouts, because I didn't see it.
I am.
But I was brain dead, but I tell my.
Downspout is not in the, I, I did it as one word, let me try this two words. I don't.
Eighteen hours.
Yeah, eighteen hours.
It's not, it's not in the, in this chapter, downspouts.
So I, I think that should be sort of spelled out, that if your drain is, is running water and freezing, that's your responsibility, even if it's running water and coming down Rock Street, you know, or, or some of that, or running water and coming to the corner, which is not necessarily in front of your building, it's your responsibility to make sure that's cleaned or sanded or something.
All water generated by your building.
Yeah, I was thinking of putting another subsection between F and G.
What's your language, Fran?
Sorry.
S and G.
Yes, that would be it.
Wow.
It's been a very long day, Marie, and I have a headache, so I'll tell you.
Do you want some aspirin?
No, no, I would not.
I don't think there's a letter between those two.
Maybe after G, let, let me start again. Let, we can put it after G.
Create a letter.
F one.
There's a whole bunch of letters between them, but I'm not writing them.
Just make a design and give it a name.
Okay. Discusses, okay, so that was one.
I can't see it, but I'm sure.
So, if you look at, I mean, double's advocate, if you look at C. Snow and ice removal, owner, owners and occupants.
Yeah, it's not D, or it was D.
Shalt at all times during the season a frost keep at least a three foot wide with the sidewalk in front of their respective houses, buildings, and lots free of snow and ice.
Right, and see, my comment was, it's not, this, these drains are not necessarily draining in front of your house. If the drain is at the side of your house and it's pointing in another direction, you're not having that in front of your house.
Okay, so if you read, "With the sidewalk in front of their respective houses, buildings, and lots."
It could actually be draining on another person's lot, or to the curb at the corner.
Also, three feet is, you know, sidewalks are twenty feet wide, some of them.
That was Main Street.
That was my thing, I think.
This, 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 by the way, okay, this, by the way, we approved. The three of us approved this. So, the with, the with was something that we bought into at the time. So it, you can see that it was amended in January of two thousand sixteen.
So.
Amended to what we're reading now, or amended somewhere else?
Yes, amended to, except for what's in red.
This was when we put in the, the regulations on cleaning in eight, within eighteen hours and that kind of stuff.
It, it used to say soon after the end of the snowfall.
And three feet is like, sometimes, you know, I mean, I realize the sidewalks are wider, as long as there's enough space for people to walk through.
I think three feet's too narrow.
Yeah.
Because what happens, too, the other thing that happens when somebody just does a shovel wide, you know, even if they're.
That's eighteen inches.
All right, so two shovels wide.
I have a third, I have a large shovel.
Selling, selling snow shovels, the average snow shovel is eighteen inches.
Whoever just shovels like a narrow little path, especially when the snow is deep on the sidewalk, what happens when the sun shines on it and it melts, you get this trough of water. what happens when the sun shines on it and it melts, you get this trough of water in the middle of it that freezes overnight, and the next morning we have an icy sidewalk.
So, they should be, they should receive a summons.
Entire sidewalk.
I think they should.
In front of their business.
I think.
You've changed from sidewalk to business.
Well, in front of your.
I think sidewalks throughout the village, everybody should clear the whole sidewalk.
Yeah, but you know, seriously, let's be honest, you clear the whole sidewalk, what would you like us to do with snow? You can put it in the street.
Well, you can't put it in the street, but you throw it into your yard.
When, if you don't have a yard, which a lot of these houses don't, then what do you do it?
You put it in the street.
You pile it up on the edge.
You pile it up on the sidewalk.
And then the guys coming scoop it up later.
Who comes and scoops it up later?
The highway crew.
No, they don't, no, first of all, you can't shovel it into the street. You need to have a, a couple of feet of space on your sidewalk to put the snow, especially if you have mounds of snow to shovel.
So, that should be the fourth, three foot purity strip.
There's only so much that I can move up.
You gotta get through the bank, just, otherwise you're gonna walk all the way to the street corner and walk back.
I just think three feet is too narrow.
Maybe the part in front should be, where you pile the snow should be three feet or four feet, and the rest should be clear.
How about if we just designate a strip of three feet wide where you can put the snow?
Yeah, that's what I mean.
And then the.
I think a lot of studies are five, five feet, we could make it five feet, we could make it a little bigger, I mean.
I like a.
If you have five feet, in front of my house, I don't have five feet.
So, you're, you're all set.
I have one shovel.
How do you know sidewalk?
Just ordered it from Leonard.
It's got this, two handles?
No, just one, just one.
So, what would you, what do you recommend? We were on the question of water draining from a person's roof or, or their gutter, down the downspout, onto public property. What would you like to be said there?
Well, that the individuals are responsible for removing all ice that their property is creating on a thorough.
We could add it to section G, snow, ice and water falling from buildings or as a result of water coming from your drain, from your building.
Draining from downspouts?
Throwing water, kids throwing water bombs, gotta get water, speaking of water.
Can we just, um.
That makes sense to add, to add a sentence in that section to me.
Okay, so here's, here's the point.
Falling or draining from buildings?
Here's the point, for many properties in the village, there's no place else they can drain it.
No, I understand that, but then you're responsible to put salt or, or sand or something on it.
And they're currently responsible for that, and they don't.
But if someone falls, the village just.
The way this, see, the way this reads, I don't see that they are, if the drain doesn't go, if the drain's not aiming in front of the building.
So, I'm, I'm just, if I walk down Garden Street, there are at least two properties on Garden Street where the downspout comes out onto the sidewalk, and, and it just creates a sheet of ice when that's happening.
And I walked down Main Street today, and besides the fact that I complained about the houses down the end, who hadn't shoveled, and, and we took care of that, um.
How'd you take care of it?
I, I reported them and they got a summons.
She quoted, she quoted section one oh eight dash twenty-three.
I don't know because.
Right now, that's the only way it can, you can receive a summons.
I think that, um, I forgot who Noranko was on, and he came back in and got names and addresses or phone numbers from Jeff.
But unless someone is home, you can't issue them a summons, and that's a problem.
It is a problem, because people will go away.
So, let's change that.
Not even if they, if they go away.
Or if they don't go away.
Original codes, take a picture, write him a ticket.
I mean, technically, if this was written right, they should have gotten a summons after eighteen hours and then an extra twenty-five dollars every day.
It has nothing to do with how it's written.
It has to do with how it's presented.
No, it has to do with what the law says you have to do with a summons, it is my understanding. We had this discussion, I thought, with John when this was done. A summons requires handing it to an individual. And if there's no one home, you can't leave it on their door, that's, that's a different thing.
What if we change it from summons to a?
Appearance ticket?
Ticket, yeah.
I don't know exactly what.
Which will be mailed to you.
I did complain to Larry, Larry called Noranko.
Take a ticket, you put it on the car.
Or Jeff called Noranko, he went down, he looked at it, he came back to the office to get some information, and then I didn't follow through on it, so I don't know what happened, but anyway.
The problem has been, for every single snowstorm, is that they're not home. So, if the snowstorm ends at ten o'clock at night and it's two o'clock the following afternoon, it's eighteen hours or whatever, whatever might, they're at work. And so, the police have.
Geez, I used to get up early to shovel before I'd get on the train.
You're an exception.
People don't do that, okay.
Okay, back to ice, um, so, the, the other thing was, walking down Main Street, uh, I'm sorry, there was a building that had a downspout that was going towards the curb at the corner, away from their, now whether or not that's their property, and it had a nice sheet of ice on it, and I'm, I'm, I just, I, I said, break real easy, so anything that I see that looks slippery or slushy gives me agita.
Yeah, over across the street, that house just down from Le Bouchon.
Mm-hmm.
Has a, has a gutter that empties out right onto Main Street.
And I think Bijou might too, and I think the street, the house right across the street.
You know, Bijou usually will put some, like he had cones, he had cones out there over the weekend, now they're not still, but I know there's, there's some.
People just need to learn that they're, they're responsible for making sure that the sidewalk in front of their building is safe.
For those, for those who don't care, you need to unfortunately have a law in writing that we.
Right, I agree.
Yeah, we should be able to summon somebody or whatever the word is.
Write a ticket.
Give them a ticket if they're not in, in alignment with what they're supposed to be doing. But what happens if someone falls on one of these icy spots on the village sidewalk, is the village liable?
This is, that's my question, if they fall on the village sidewalk, is the village, and then can we push it over to the homeowner because they didn't follow the code?
Fall on their eyes.
Yeah, that's, that's another question.
Which is, you know, that's the biggest concern on Main Street, other streets could happen as well, but there's a lot of slick spots on Main Street if you're walking around, not really paying attention, especially crossing the street rock right here, across the other side, there's, there's pretty icy right here.
No, for nothing, I mean, the, the crosswalk right in front of the hotel this morning was from, um, Pink Olive or whatever it is across the street, straight across is perfectly clean until you got to the handicaps, um, drive right here, and it was layered with that ice. I said, Jeff, please call, so Bugsy came and salted it, but, you know, obviously either something had drained and the water had drained and it, it froze over, but that's, you know.
Be honest.
Okay, so the answer to your question is?
There was a lot of questions there.
Yeah, and, and the big, one of the biggest questions is, is if somebody falls on a sidewalk that's got ice on it because somebody didn't clean it, do we get, I'm sure we'll be part of that lawsuit, we'll be part of that lawsuits.
Well, if we have something in the code that says that the person causing the ice buildup, the person's property is, that's causing the ice buildup, does not address it or make reasonable attempts to address it,
It's a noise.
Then that way, our liability is passed back on to.
Yeah, Marie, has, has John looked at this chapter yet?
Yes, he has, and he's approved it.
He didn't walk down Main Street before he looked at it on a snowy day.
He definitely didn't slide down the street.
And just as you, so you understand, I don't bring you anything to review unless it has been signed off by John.
Well, what about, what about in number A, general, it's the general provision here. The owner or owners and occupant and, or occupants of each and every building and lot of ground in the village shall at all times keep the sidewalk in front of their respective houses, buildings and lots free from weeds and rubbish of every kind, can't we just add ice and snow?
Ice, ice and snow is the next section.
Look at C.
Yeah.
Look at item C, snow and ice.
I don't have any D on ice.
Look at D.
It's a D.
Snow and ice removal, the other one.
Okay.
It says the same thing.
Well, then it says, keep a three foot width of sidewalk in front of their respective houses, buildings, free of snow and ice.
And then we went on for.
But, but that's like the three foot width.
And, but that's where you can add what you were saying.
Or you can add it in G, snow, ice and water falling, the owner or owners, uh, she'll take reasonably adequate measures to protect the public, well, that's falling, so, you know, I, I would go back to D.
Yep, and add it on the, another sentence on it, and I think we should width the, right, widen the width.
Yeah, five, and then just add another sentence saying, responsible parties must make sure that the sidewalk in front of their respective buildings is safe for pedestrian traffic.
That's, that's, that is, um, very judgment, it, it is subjective.
Yeah, required.
Saying that it's safe for some, that is a subjective statement.
Different for everybody.
And, and we, we, we need to move a little bit away from in front of their respective buildings because sometimes the drains flow away from their buildings.
Right.
Well, if it's, if it's not in front of their building in line, then it's in front of somebody's building in line.
Or it goes to the curb at the corner where it's village property.
If it goes to the curb at the corner and it doesn't traverse over a sidewalk, what's the problem?
No, it goes, all right, let me, let me rephrase it, it goes from, and I saw one today and I don't even know what building I was in front of. It came from the house aimed towards the corner, so that whole patch of sidewalk from the building to the corner was ice.
Okay, so who's, that sidewalk, whose building or lot was it in front of?
I don't know that building, it was, it was the end of the corner, so I don't know if, where the building lines are, but I would say that that's village property. You know, where the building line ends in the sidewalk continues, that's village property to the curb.
I, can you draw it for me, I'm, I don't understand how it's, um.
Sorry. Um, this is a street, there's a, there's a building here, it's the last building on the, on the street. They had a drain pipe and it was, it was ended here, but it was, the water was flowing in this direction.
So, it's in a corner?
It's in a corner.
Okay, so they are responsible for the sidewalk around the corner?
They're responsible, even though that's not.
Well, the water came from their house.
Yeah. It's, it's.
We listed.
It's snow and ice that is in front of their respective lot. Their lot is a corner lot, it has two fronts.
Okay.
But there are areas where the ice goes down, the other, it's not on their property.
I mean, I'm, I'm, as Steve said, you know, somebody, if somebody falls, the village is gonna get it to village property. Somebody wanna make sure that what this reads is, will get us out of that mess somewhere along the way.
Or at least give us a.
Or at least.
A scapegoat.
Yeah.
Or, yeah, ground to stand on.
Well, at least the village has some protection.
You know, if, if the crosswalk had ice in it, or the end of it, that's us, you know.
That's not a problem.
It's us, absolutely.
But then you go a little further than the sidewalk in front of Catherine's, that's her problem, right, so.
How about, just to be more clear on this, shall at all times during the season of frost, keep at least a three foot width of sidewalk in front of and alongside.
Well, we could change that to five foot minimum width.
The problem I, I have with five feet, people are gonna, that, that, there are sidewalks, most of the sidewalks that are not on Main Street are three feet wide.
Right.
Right, so, how, you want them to keep a five fo- that, there's, the sidewalk is only three feet wide, if, if you're saying five foot.
Okay, if you say, keep your sidewalk clean.
Three feet's pretty.
Three feet is.
It's, it's a good size.
Well, people are walking by each other.
Well, you know, then you, then you stand back and you be polite and you want somebody to pay.
Yeah, I don't like that.
Nasty person.
The other thing that happens too, and I've seen this so much, is that when there's just a little narrow channel shoveled, and I'm thinking particularly on Main Street, if there's a little channel that's shoveled, what happens is people walking to and from the train wind up walking in the street because the sidewalk on Main Street in our business district is not consistently cleared. And so, they wind up walking in the street because the sidewalk's not safe, which is, and walking in the street when everybody wears a black coat is even more dangerous.
Well, first of all, a little narrow path is not three feet, three feet is wider than a narrow path, and secondly, I walked Main Street this weekend, and last weekend, and everything on Main Street was clear, pretty much to the curb. I mean, the storekeepers are doing a very good job of it, and I'm not saying that the storekeepers, in the future.
Well, it might not always.
Um, but they, you know, other than those houses, and that wasn't a shop, that was private homes, everything else was very clear. You know, and I was, I was surprised at how clear it was, but, and now, on the other side of it, when you're going to work at six o'clock in the morning and nobody's up yet shoveling, you are gonna walk in the street on Main Street, that's just sort of what happens, you know, in this life area, and you carry a flashlight and it's, it's just sort of.
And that is permitted by the, the public.
What if we add an, another letter between D and E, that, uh, snow and ice removal on Main Street?
And they're, okay.
And then everywhere else is just the rest of the village.
What's a snow and ice removal?
Well, then we have a larger amount of snow being removed and required, bigger area to be cleared in front of your, your place if you're on Main.
Okay, so, if, if you're on Main and you are north, sorry, east of, um, Morris Chesna, you've probably only got three feet.
Yeah, that's.
And if you're.
So, maybe we don't put a foot on it, we just say, keep, keep the sidewalk clearer. If you're on Main Street, you're required to clear more sidewalk than everywhere else or whatever.
So, if you look at the next one, turn limit for snow and ice removal, sidewalks in front of commercial establishments, and commercial parking lots shall be kept free of snow and ice at all times. In other words, if, if you're a business on Main Street, you're supposed to shovel from your storefront to the curb.
Okay, so why are we talking about this?
Because we have.
Cause we just spent twenty minutes talking about this.
Because we have a, Main Street a jackaliner deep of, uh, private residences and commercial operations.
All right, no, I said, so. What about, uh.
What, what's the problem you're trying to solve?
Commercial areas, areas.
What, what's the problem you're trying to solve?
Uh, to have people that are on Main Street have to remove most of the snow out of the way so people.
Yeah, but it, it is.
And also, anybody who has a place on Main Street that drains water onto the sidewalk, if you clear a three foot area of your ice, and then there's ice, there's a big pile of ice next to that.
Okay.
So.
So, that, that.
So, I would like to have a larger, uh, way, right away through the ice and snow on Main Street. So, I don't know, like, if, if, commercial buildings and all that explains that, but Lynn just pointed out that if you live on Main Street, your house is there. So, everyone else has a, most of the sidewalk cleared for people nearby, and then you have a little tiny shovel way, or three feet minimum.
Three feet, three feet, three feet, yeah.
Just in those places, and then you get in front of a commercial business again, and it's wide again.
Yes, so if I come down Main Street from the red light on the south side of Main Street, the first residential, non-commercial that I reach is eighty-nine Main Street, and then eighty-seven Main Street. And then the next residential, non-commercial is not until I get, um, to the house, um, just, sorry, until I get to just beyond the Foundry Cafe. So, from the Foundry Cafe, so, from.
And the sidewalk's narrower up to Hill Austin, so.
Yeah, and, yes, the, the.
Well, I think it solves, this, what we just read solves what I'm talking about.
The one thing that it doesn't address is drains.
Right, and clearing, keeping that ice clear, so I was under the impression that you only had to have three feet cleared down through where everybody walks.
So.
We, we could, if you want to address drains, snow, uh, in.
Yeah, I was thinking drains.
In G, or it might be H in your screen, snow, ice and water falling from buildings or as a result of water, um.
I would, I would make it another one, Fran.
Okay.
Uh, so. So, depo- after deposits on streets.
Mm-hmm.
And the, the new one would be.
Under I.
Yes, well.
Whatever letter comes in there sometimes.
All pieces, Jane.
Draining onto sidewalk, does that sound good?
Downspout drain, or any kind of thing.
Any kind of draining, right.
Downspout and.
Well, you could put it in G, snow, ice and water falling and or draining from buildings. That way it all applies.
That's base, yeah.
Mm-hmm. And/or.
And, and not, it might not be falling.
Falling or draining.
And or draining.
Or draining.
Snow, ice and water falling on buildings, falling.
And or draining.
And or draining.
Yeah, then you have to put that again at the, um, at the end of that section.
From buildings, the owner or owners and occupants or occupant or occupants of buildings adjacent to public sidewalks and walkways shall take reasonably adequate measures to protect the public from the falling snow, ice, water, ice or water, and from. From falling.
Ice forming on the sidewalks.
Draining.
Or ice accumulating on sidewalks.
Draining, we've got ice accumulating on sidewalks and other places. Draining, snow, ice and water falling from, and or draining from buildings. It says protect the public, to protect the public.
From the falling snow, ice or water.
Right, and, and we're not trying to protect the public, but here you're worried about something coming down on you.
Right, I'm worried about falling.
From the falling snow, ice or water from such buildings upon those sidewalks, oops. Sorry, I gotta back up here. From such. Sidewalks, oops. In addition.
Right.
Owner, in addition, owners, owners and occupants of buildings adjacent to. Public. Sidewalks and walkways. Shall, shall. Keep the sidewalks and walkways. Clear, free from.
Accumulating ice.
Free from, how do you wanna say it, water which may.
Freeze.
From water which may freeze. I'm sure somebody can say it better, but it was.
That's alright, it's, we got the idea.
We've got the concept, right?
Draining water.
Free from draining water.
Which may turn it out.
Free from water, making green stuff again, draining, um, buildings.
What's the word? Turned into ice.
Okay.
See, I have a bunch of other, I know Dave's, Dave's gonna give you the evil idea.
Okay.
Uh, some of these may be easy answers and I just.
Okay.
You know, those are the, um, section one oh eight dash twenty-seven.
Separability.
No, I'm sorry, that should be, um, penalties for offenses, one oh eight, there's twenty-six on our page, I think, Marie, you have twenty-seven.
Yeah, sorry.
Is that a duplication of section one oh eight-ten? I found that a couple of times and I was like, I'd read this, already corrected this.
Right, it, it applies to this article, yeah.
It's part of.
Building materials and things.
It's just that one paragraph, but I know I had read these numbers before.
Yeah, 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 so, I'm, I'll need to research that, Fran, you may, uh, you may be absolutely right. It was one oh four.
One oh eight dash.
One oh eight dash.
Twenty-seven. And the original one I have is one oh eight-ten, was just would be A, I believe, um, no, well, it's in there someplace, I lost that, I know I hadn't read it before.
Uh-uh, let me just, you know, I'll go to the index.
And then I have another similar.
So, one oh eight-ten has to do with penalties in Article IV.
Right. But this, one oh eight-twenty-seven reads any person committing an offense against any of the provisions of this chapter or article, um, so, where.
See, it does, that's interesting, I don't find that one in, in the index.
Penalties, you didn't see penalties, penalties for offenses, one oh eight-twenty-six and one oh, uh, maybe twenty-seven and one oh eight, uh, let me find ten.
Okay.
Is it the same line?
Uh, yes, one oh eight-twenty-seven, you're right. That applies to Article VII.
But it doesn't say what it says.
Okay, I'll, let me go back to it.
Against any of the provisions of this chapter or article, so.
I don't know why there's a separate one, I have no clue. I'm gonna have to investigate that, but, good catch.
Okay. Okay, uh, another fast one on one oh, uh, blah, 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 one oh eight fifteen, letter C. Pavement.
One oh eight fifteen. C pavement.
Okay, um, partway down, I guess it's sort of the end of the first sentence, which is endless, uh, with respect to the central line of the right way. Then, is that something I don't know, or should that be right of way?
No, it, I think that should be right of way.
Okay.
Um, what's another one?
One oh eight fifteen C. Then I have another duplication, one oh eight-eight and one oh eight-three.
One oh eight. One oh eight.
Eight.
Fees and deposits.
And one oh eight-three.
One oh eight-three is fees and deposits for street openings, um, one oh eight-eight is fees and deposits for driveways.
Like exactly the same stuff, I mean, exactly, it reads exactly the same, at least I'm pretty sure I didn't cross-reference it.
No, you, it, it may be exactly the same, but it's a, it's a different topic, one is street openings, the other is driveways.
Uh, one oh eight-seven.
Curation procedure.
Nice, I put myself in note that since we mentioned possible tripping hazards.
Oh, there should, John had inserted in, in, it's either streets and sidewalks or in another topic that the village was not responsible for, um, uncorrid, um, tripping hazards.
If somebody is pouring a new driveway or whatever, it creates a tripping hazard because they leave it, you know, uneven. We saw a whole bunch of other stuff and didn't see anything about a tripping hazard.
Something being done is being supervised or approved by the, uh, the highway chief, so it's not going to be a, there's a tripping hazard.
Right. Okay. But to me, no.
I would hope.
I think he's.
Is it private, like, somewhere hidden or whatever?
I can't remember where it is.
Paving it.
I don't know. Nope, it's not my building.
And one oh eight-five. B. One oh eight-five B, I'm sorry.
Declaration.
Okay, I can't find it now, sorry, go ahead.
So, one oh eight-five B talks about traffic unless otherwise authorized by the superintendent of highways, which I guess should be the highway supervisor, but, um, uh, highway crew chief. Should we also mention the officer in charge as authorizing some traffic regulations? It says the heading is traffic, it's B.
One oh eight-five, protection of B. Okay, mine says, unless otherwise authorized by the highway crew chief.
Right.
Mm-hmm. Traffic shall be maintained at all times during the progress of the operation being performed on the, on it, and the permit is shall have due regard for the safety of all traffic on the public shell. So, the highway crew chief is the person who says it may or, traffic may or may not proceed down this street that is having some sort of operation performed on it.
So, the officer in charge doesn't have any say.
And three, it says prior watchman, teamist.
I, I would think. Well, if, if the highway crew chief says it's okay, then you don't need.
Okay, I missed a file there.
Okay.
Um, I think the. I have. You took out on one oh eight-three A-one the fee of seventy-five dollars to cover the cost of issuing the permit, I understand taking out the price for the fee, but why did we take out the whole section? One oh eight-three A-one.
So, so there is still a three A.
Right, and it's the subsection one.
So the cost of the fee should be found in the, um, uh, master fee schedule.
Right, but I don't, I didn't, I didn't see that, is it still in there? Cause it looked like you took out the whole section and didn't add anything.
Well, the, right, I took out the whole section because it, it would be found in the master fee schedule.
So we don't have to say that there is a fee.
There is a master fee schedule.
Or, yeah, that there is a fee to cover the cost of issuing the permit and the inspection.
It's still there. One oh eight-three A says no permit for an operation shall be issued until the applicant shall have first paid to the highway crew chief a fee in cash or paycheck payable to the owner and manager.
Okay, so, so it says as a deposit, okay, I'll be, I'll be.
Sorry, it, a de-, I don't see a deposit.
That's the second number.
Huh?
It's number two down, right underneath.
Oh, oh. A deposit, okay, the deposit is supposed to cover the cost of doing the work. And it's based upon, um, the amount of the work that's gonna be done. So, uh, back to A, a fee, a, I'm gonna find it. First pay, a fee. First paid to the. A fee period, we don't want it in cash, we don't want a bank, um.
Mm-hmm.
Fee schedule. We don't want people to think bugs is cash.
Right.
Or any mortgage employee for that matter. Okay.
I'm done, it looks like everybody's done.
Okay, so.
Excellent.
Mm-hmm. Nope, Lynn's not done.
Sorry, no, it was just a, a thing, and now I can't find it, I was looking at it earlier today, um, it was under one oh eight, I wrote it down as I was reading
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm sorry.
one oh eight dash twenty-three, but now it's not in here anywhere, um, it was about street sales, does this make any sense?
Uh, that was, it's in here. That was earlier, with the sliding and gliding.
Is, is that where it is?
Merchandise on side, with the one oh eight twenty-four, Lynn, maybe?
Heteros another.
One, one oh eight twenty-two, twenty-two.
Heteros another, oh, it was on sidewalks?
Yeah.
Uh, one oh eight twenty-two.
Well, um, the question I had was, let me see if I can find it, I think it's.
One oh eight two-two.
One oh eight two-two, street sell, no person shall by selling or advertising on the street sidewalks or public places in the village cause a crowd to gather, blah, blah, blah. Um, for a longer time while engaged in making one sale without permission of the mayor. What about ice cream trucks?
I, I can't find that, was it, it was twenty-two?
One oh eight two-two, street sales.
It may be renumbered.
Yes, street sales.
It's right before the coasting and all that.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
Oh, no person shall by selling sidewalks, cause a crowd to gather, obstruct, or show any person stopping anywhere, okay, without permission of the mayor. No person shall sell any merchandise at auctions in any of the street sidewalks or public places without permission of mayor, so what's the question?
My question was, what about ice cream trucks when they show up?
I.
They get, they get permission?
Yeah, they have to get permission.
They get a permit, so there would be permission of the mayor?
Their food truck.
Is, but isn't there, would that be, would street sales cover that? I mean, should we cover it? Where is that covered in the code? Cause I haven't run across it yet.
I don't know, I'd have to, I'd have to look for vendors, you want me to do that?
Well, I was just thinking, you know, cause I, I was thinking of this scenario as I was reading this, you know, uh, shall stop, shall any person stop in a highway for the purpose of selling merchandise for longer time than while engaged in making one sale um, without the permission of the mayor. So it, it just got me thinking about when the ice cream shop trucks, they just show up and make sales and kids gather on the.
You know, I, this, this is, I've never seen an ice cream truck in the village, I don't have it.
You don't have these in, not in the village.
No, no.
I mean, I see more.
In a city.
You haven't?
No, never, never.
I've seen at least ten.
Could you nominate an ice cream truck?
I did not.
When have you seen ice cream trucks? Like, like the, the.
Over the past, like, seven, eight years, I see them show up in my neighborhood.
Wow, we never hear about them.
Drive through our neighborhood and stop.
Out in the back forty, we don't get them.
In the Iron Dax, they come around.
I've seen one on Main Street.
Like the, like the good, the good humor guy?
Yeah, like good humor.
Really?
Yeah.
Never seen, I mean, I've never heard the ice cream, you know, you, you know where the ice cream man comes?
I will, I will look up to see where ice cream.
I just wondered if it applied here, that's all.
Okay. Uh, Dave, I know you had, uh, some top, some comments on this, not on ice cream.
Uh. I don't know.
I think, now you want me, maybe one ice cream.
I'm on merchandise.
Yes.
Um.
On sidewalks.
Uh, one oh eight, that's two, four, eight, um, we talked about this a while ago, it's, um, no person shall place or cause placed upon any street sidewalk considered as any goods, wares, or merchandise, but there are people that put other stuff out, I don't know how you categorize it, displays or.
What this says is merchandise and other items on sidewalks, the type of topic.
What's that?
The topic, the section, the name has been changed, it's now merchandise and other items on sidewalks.
Right.
Okay, so.
So, then maybe it should be other, and other items, then?
And merchandise and other items on sidewalks. The first per, first one says, no person shall place or cause to be placed upon any street or sidewalk in said village any goods, wares, or merchandise or containers they rub, or items such as tables, chairs, umbrellas, or the purpose of providing dining opportunities except when engaged in the loading or unloading of vehicles. So, this was a direct, I was trying to capture not just the stuff.
Right, I don't have this here, so I can't, I don't know what I'm working with.
Would it vote, um, yeah, I know, yeah, I mean.
Like, I, Jeff can't, can't copy these things right, what's?
Well, he, he copies the best, the most current one he has based on Google Docs, and this, you know.
Yeah, well, and I've been having problems.
I mean, he copied these late this afternoon.
I don't know how to comment on stuff then, because I'm making comments on stuff that's kind of been changed, or I don't even see here, so how am I gonna follow along?
Yeah, I didn't know he was going for a new version of Google, Google of one oh eight today. The only thing he asked me for was, I think, twenty one? Maybe ninety three.
He said, uh, he called me late and said he was printing out the latest version of one oh eight after I had made some comments, and I don't know if the comments are in. But they don't show, I mean, the one I see on my phone here shows the adjustments you're talking about. But the one that showed.
I'll look at those and send you the docs, it was just a couple of things, and I remember seeing it now, but I don't re, I don't have it to go by here. So, I don't, I don't have a laptop because, whatever. I think we should invest in those, and I think we should all have something to work off of it.
Yeah, I just.
I think it's.
I want that one.
Um, you don't want this one.
I, I will not, I will not use a tablet unless it has a thumb drive.
Start picking on it? It's what?
I will not use a tablet unless it has a thumb drive attachment.
Why's that?
Because I carry all my work with me.
Yeah, it's all computer.
Can you, is there a cord with a thumb that you can do that?
I have not been able to find a, a, uh, an adapter that will take a thumb drive and go into the new style USB ports.
And we need to find something that we can all get laptops and, and, and come into another century.
Yeah, something, I mean, he's talking, Anthony, about, the other issue, the other question that he has is like, our new, our new website supposedly has a, at least I remember when they talked to us the first time, a section of it that is hidden that we could just use for ourselves, and whether or not we can actually do this kind of work. You know, commenting back and forth without losing stuff, he's, he's asked them to, he hasn't got his back from that. Because this is, I mean, can we go back to at this point just working with Word, uh, Word documents and making?
Do whatever you want, I don't care. That's a last thought.
Yeah, if, I mean, if we take the documents that you, I guess that you put up on Google Docs. If, if I open a document on Google Docs and save it as a Word document, can I accept all the changes that you and John have done before?
That's how I've been reading it.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's how, it's on.
Thanks, Steph.
Everything that, that.
Because of, yeah.
Everything that John wrote, everything you wrote, everything I'm writing, you're red, John's blue, I'm gold. And then when I save it and open it again, it's all still there. And then I send it to you as PDF.
Yeah, I mean, if I could.
So, you send it as a PDF.
If I could save at least the stuff Marie and John did, which is the earlier stuff, then I've got the clean document that you're looking at, and then my comments.
Most recent.
We should probably discuss, but then I should save it under a different name. Probably save it under a different name would be helpful, cause it's not reset every time she opens on Google Docs, it's the same old document again.
Yeah, I had a terrible problem with chapter twenty one. It would not take my most current version, kept going back to a version from pre-December. How, how it got that, I don't know. I, I just gave up. And then today I found multiple versions of the same chapter. One is a dot doc, the other has a doc X. I have no idea where they both, where either one of them came from.
I mean, I was working with, like, Dave and I were talking today, and we, I was able to at least figure out how to do enough, so I think you guys got emails from me that says Fran has made some adjustments and you can click on it.
Mm-hmm.
We figured out how to do that, and you could, I think, see my comments. But whether or not, you know, it opens up a new, I mean, well, every time I opened to try to edit something, it said you need, before you can edit, like you said, it has to be changed to a doc X, um, so I just said okay.
That's just the newer version, but it's not really even the newest version you find yourself with.
Right. Yeah, I just said okay, and then allowed me to do it, but it, it still didn't. I don't think there's any way that I could actually clean up all of your little edits that went on since July or whatever, so that we can start with that.
Off, off on the right hand side as the history. You're doing that every, in, in Google Docs.
Right.
The right hand side history, yeah, I don't know how you get rid of that.
Yeah, I, there was a way, but I think, I, I saw something and I really, you know, I said to myself, either I'm gonna spend time reading this or I'm gonna spend time playing with Google Docs. But there was a way, I think you could accept every one of those, but individually, you know, like, I don't know if you could accept them all and if they would go away, and I didn't wanna do that on Google's docs cause it would screw up what you put up there. So, it's almost easier if I just pull it out of there and do it on Word.
Um, so it's time, uh, next week, uh, one of the topics is shopping carts. I'm going to recommend we delete the chapter.
That was really funny to read.
I don't, I'm sorry, it, you know, I, I didn't make it up, it was there. So, I'm, I'm recommending that we just delete shopping carts from the code. It doesn't seem to, uh, we have one, one store that has shopping carts.
There was a problem in seventy one, apparently, according to this.
Apparently when they, yeah.
And, and the best part about it was, uh, they reserved the right to auction these carts off should they end up in the hands of the village unattended. Right. At a, some type of cart auction, which they used to have back in the seventies, and. They were big. They had to have the placard from wherever it was from, and if it didn't, well, the village is gonna take that, give you an auction and off for a couple bucks. Put a boot on it. Something. I was like, what, is this real? It sounded like someone got pissed one day. Came down here, the mayor at the time was like, oh yeah, well, here's how it's gonna be.
Little league, little league used to take the shopping carts home and then we.
They do.
Yeah, they leave in the woods.
Over to Chestnut, over to Chestnut Bridge, you'll find a bunch.
Used to find a lot of them in the woods back in the day.
And then when people get tired of them, they throw them off the side of the hill.
Yeah.
We used to ride them down the hills.
Okay, so, uh, next, uh, meeting, we have dumpsters and roll-off containers, peace and good order, which would be easy. Shopping carts, which aren't, we are not going to cover.
Give numbers, I'm sorry, Marie.
You should read it though, if you fly, it's, it's a quick read.
Yes.
It's funny.
Wait, what are we doing, dumpsters, peace and good order?
Forty eight. Peace and good order eighty seven. Ignore shopping carts, which is one oh one. Steep slopes, one oh six. This is a new chapter, a totally new chapter.
One oh six.
One oh six. Um, pools, one twenty nine. Taxation, one eighteen.
What about one thirty two that we didn't do tonight?
One thirty two, we're not gonna do one thirty two tonight. It is nine o'clock.
Yeah, I understand, you wanna do that, you wanna add that next week?
That'll be the first one next week. Actually, I think we need to reconvene on one oh eight next week.
Right. I'm going to, if you don't mind, uh, I'm not sure the best way to do it, but I'm gonna work in, in regular Word. And if I make, like, I'm not gonna, I guess you can see edits, right, you can see comments. Shall I, every time I make comments, shall I just send it to everybody? And then how do we, how do, how do you want that done? Do you want us to just make comments and send them to you, so we all do individual comments, or?
Whatever way is, is easiest for you.
Well, if you write them on the document, they'll be on there when we open them.
If I send, if I send you the one that I'm working on. Yeah.
Well, we're all saving the same version.
Well, that's just it, I, as I said, I've been having a problem with which versions are out on Google Docs. Uh, first thing tomorrow, I'm going to refresh all of the upcoming chapters on Google Docs and then go through and review them, and I thought I'd been doing that, and go through and review them to make sure that they contain the correct version.
It's easy for someone to slip through the cracks or that, so.
There's no other drive that we can put everything on.
That you can actually edit and run.
And then even if I just, yeah, I don't know. Plow through.
I'm making a motion to adjourn, I'm having a splitting headache.
What's here? Drink some of this. Drink some of this, you'll feel better.
It's, um, uh, you're recommending, um, and you were going back and forth about what your coverage limits should be. I was, uh, wondering if maybe, uh, the village would be well-served by consulting with your insurance agent about those terms in the code before enacting those coverage limits, just.
All right.
Um, my second contribution is that in Google, you can accept all, all at once. You can also view like the clean version of something that's got all these markups. If you go into your tools tab, and there's a little snaglet that allows you, if you are, um, you can be in viewing mode and you can view the file as if it has all of the changes accepted, so.
Next Wednesday, will you come and teach us Google Docs?
The, the problem with doing it, I guess.
Baby boomer problems right here.
Is you don't get to see what was there before.
I gotta go, I gotta, my day.
I, I thought you were talking about not being.